It's there. Call the meeting to order. First order of business is a closed meeting. Do we have a motion?
Set moved.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second?
I'll just wing and start.
Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, Discussion Concerning a Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business or Industry's Interest in Locating or Expanding Its Facilities in the Community. Discussion, Consideration of Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining or Resignation of Specific Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body; One, the Montgomery Tourism Development Council; Two, Transportation Safety Commission. Would you call the roll?
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Ms. Spies?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Scheffler?
Aye.
Chair Fitchakowski?
Aye. You're in closed session. Do we have a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Set moved.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Ms. Spies?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Scheffler?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Chair Fitchakowski?
Aye. Okay, next certification of our closed meeting. Do we have a motion for that?
Set moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Ms. Spies?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Scheffler?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, I'll turn it over to our Administrator.
Good evening, everyone. If we could rise for a moment of silence, and after that moment of silence, I'll lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have the budget presentation from Montgomery County Public Schools.
Well, good evening, Chair Fitchakowski, Board members, Mr. Meadows. I'm here tonight to present the school board's proposed budget for the 2020-21 school year. First thing I'd like to do is just talk about our accomplishments from this past year. A lot of great things happening in our school division. One, we're the first in Virginia to actually implement a drone curriculum in our schools. We have drone classes this past year at Blacksburg High School, next year they'll be at all four high schools. We actually had some students who earned their FAA pilot license to fly drones commercially this year, and so that was in collaboration with Wings. It's Wing, right? And so I'm very proud of those students, but we're the first in Virginia to do that. Something else, we're the first in Virginia to have an associate's degree in computer science. Our students can earn a computer science associate's degree in partnership with New River before they graduate high school. They can actually seamlessly go to Rafferty University as a junior because the program moves right into Rafferty, and from my understanding, Virginia Tech has also created the same type of pathway for us also. So that's very exciting, and of course, that's where the jobs are, cybersecurity and any of the computer fields. We expanded our loading program this year to all high schools, our nursing program, cybersecurity, which is one of the, you know, number-one desired positions in Virginia. Cybersecurity is at all four high schools now, and our students can get certifications there. Elementary STEM positions is something that we put in this year as a specialty, and what a specialty is, is our elementary students, every week they go to P.E., art, music, library, guidance, and now they go to STEM and learn STEM activities. And actually, what we did this year is we substituted STEM for, I mean, for guidance, to give guidance counselors more time to actually do guidance work with kids who need it. So that really helped our guidance folks as well. Also, ILEAD is a gifted program that we, we're in our second year in, and ILEAD is a gifted program where basically it is an efficient way of doing gifted, in that we didn't even have to add any staff members to actually serve more students. It's a multi-grade level approach. What our gifted teachers used to do is call in one grade level at a time. Now it's a multi-grade level approach where they bring in multiple grade levels to actually have more time with a larger group of students. And so that's been a really great success as well. This year, we've been in the strategic planning process. We're working on our five-year strategic plan that hopefully by the end of the school year, it will be set in place as to what we expect Montgomery County schools to do in the next five years, and that's been going really well. So far, we've had about 160 people involved in this process, so it's been a very thorough process. You know, something else, too, Corps Cadets is a program that we added this year. We had approximately 200 students in the Corps Cadets this year. It's like a JRTC program that we actually worked with Virginia Tech to implement, and looking at next year, we have over 300 students that are looking to enroll in the Corps Cadet program at all four high schools. And they're actually, it's not just a classroom thing, it's also an after-school curriculum. They can be on the shooting team, which is marksmanship, they can be on the drill team, and they can be on what's called the raider team, which is the physical fitness team. This past year, I mean, this past weekend, excuse me, Blacksburg High School and Christiansburg High School went to their first drill meet, and I'm proud to say that Blacksburg High School finished second overall in squad competition this weekend, their first meet ever as a school, so I'm real proud of those students. Something, too, this year that we've accomplished at the central office, we created the first licensed, local licensure program in Virginia. 132 school divisions in Virginia, we're the only ones to now have a local, approved local licensure program where teachers can come to us without a teacher license, and we can actually give them their teacher license. And this was approved by the Department of Education, and we've been very busy taking requests from around the state from other school divisions to ask how we actually do that. And in fact, some of our folks went to Richmond this weekend to present on this program, so really amazing. Some accomplishments from this past year's budget, we gave our employees an average of a 3.5% raise. We went, out of eight school divisions in our area, we went from number seven in starting teacher salary to number two in starting teacher salary. Huge accomplishment, and it's making a big difference. It's really going to make a difference this year, because as you know, we hired a lot of teachers prior to the budget, you know, being complete. So a lot of folks didn't know how well we actually did, but this year, I think we're going to get a lot more folks that are applying in Montgomery County schools. In fact, we have our first job fair of this Saturday, and we have a few hundred folks who will come to us to want to teach with us, so we're excited about that. We hired 19 full-time FTEs this past year. Eighteen of them were directly in the classroom. They're classroom teachers in some way, shape, or form. And of course, with our increased enrollment, that's important. You know, we keep going up in the enrollment. We're the only school division on this side of the Alamo that's actually increasing in school population, and that is a good problem to have and a challenging problem. It can go both ways, so, but we were able to meet those needs. Our school board, for the first time in many years, had a pay increase and allowed to purchase benefits. And then, health insurance for our employees stayed the same last year. There was no increase for our employees in terms of health insurance. And something else we were able to do is add nurses to VRS last year. We had carryover this past year as well, and some accomplishments with our carryover, we were able to buy two buses. Now let me remind you, what we have been doing for the past four years is buying eight buses a year, and buying eight buses a year and not a lot in one year, not too few in one year. It creates a steady flow in terms of the purchasing from year to year. And so we bought two, but we had already bought six within our regular budget prior to, so we got to eight last year. And just to let you know where we are this year, we've already bought two, and we need to buy six more, okay? We bought band instruments and art supplies, K through 12, this past year, for our teachers and our students. We were able to buy the Corps Cadets uniforms and supplies to start that program. We moved operations to the Operations Center at the old Christiansburg Middle School. There was some cost involved there. You know, there we put the coffee center, the testing coordinator facilities, transportation, school nutrition, purchasing in our warehouse. We also have savings in laps. What that is, is this, every year, once the budget's passed, unfortunately, we have folks that quit and leave us. You know, there's a turnover rate probably with teachers of about 10%, which is not unlike anywhere in the state, and then we hire new people. And usually what happens is folks that leave us or retire are replaced with folks that don't make as much money, but yet the budget is based on no one leaving. So there's a lapse in there in terms of money, and there's money to be used there, you know, that we can actually hire folks or, you know, do what we need to do. So with that lapse money this past year, we had a couple of elementary schools that had no assistant principals, it was just a principal and that's it. And so we were able to add, where basically every elementary school has at least an assistant principal a half a day at least, some are split between a couple of schools, which makes it very important in terms of coverage. You ask teachers sometimes what they want, and they will tell you they want extra administrators to help them out when they need to. We hired secondary reading specialists. This is something that we did not have enough of. What we have, unfortunately, not all kids learn to read in elementary school. We still have kids who go to middle school and still can't read, and so we really took a hard look at our program at the middle school to see what we could do to get more kids reading in middle school prior to high school. So we changed some things in how we approached that. Also, at Auburn High School, we hired additional guidance counselors. We only had one guidance counselor at Auburn High School, and we hired additional counselor with this lapse money. So this is money from that savings that we put back in the schools. Capital funds, Phase Two of the athletic project at Christiansburg High School is complete, starting at Phase Three. Phase Three, which is the halftime building, which will include the concession stand and the restrooms and the locker rooms, it should be done by beginning of April. We should get some use out of it. Also, we were able to design with these capital funds, CES, CPS, and the Bellevue Projects. We put a roof on at Margaret Beeks Elementary School. We partially funded the Blacksburg High School turf field. About half was paid for by us because we need to fix this field. The boosters put up the rest of the money to actually make it a turf field. The modular units, Hardy Avenue, to address overcrowding, that got done this past summer. We converted the tech center, which is the corner of Christiansburg High School, because they moved over to the Operations Center, into the Corps Cadet building. And so that's where those classes meet, and that's where their uniform storage is and all of their supplies. Goals for the budget this coming year. First is to continue with a quality educational program. It's the backbone of what we do. We have, I believe, some of the best teachers, some of the best instruction that goes on in our classroom every single day, and they need to be supported. We've adjusted our offerings in our schools to match what the demand is. You know, we're not doing with our CTE programs what was done 20 and 30 years ago, because the industries have changed and where jobs are changed, and we're changing with it, you know, with robotics and computer science. Something we did bring back this past year for the first time is building trades. We did not have a building trades, and you guys know how important building trades is because if you have to call a plumber or electrician, they're doing pretty well when you pay them. And so we brought back building trades this year to get more kids interested in that area also. And also, we want to make sure we're maintaining our class sizes. You know, we're asking to add a few teachers, and adding these teachers will help us, these are all based on class sizes that we've looked at. Second goal is to continue to improve teacher pay. Teacher pay, it's a moving target. We're always competing with other districts. You know, it is never fixed. It should never stand still, because other districts this year are already talking about raises for next year. Now, we made great accomplishments this past year. We, you know, we went to number two in starting salary. Between all the local school divisions, we're about midway. We actually surpassed Rafferty in every area. The only school divisions that are beating us really in some areas are Roanoke City, Salem City, and Roanoke County, but we do compete with those folks. And so it's important that we continue to do that also. And I believe in rewarding our veteran teachers. Our scale stops at step 32, and if you look at our scale, 32, we increased that step, that, just at 32, where it was this year, this coming year, by 2%. Because what happens is most teachers move from, say, 31 to 32, or 20 to 21, and they get that raise. If you stay on that top step, and we don't increase that top step some, and there's a cost of living, which this year is 1.6%, you could actually lose money per se. And so we increased that top step by about almost 2%. So that was important to us. We're asking for an average raise of 3% for all employees this year. And something, too, that we're focusing on are our classified employees. We want all our classified employees who are full-time for us to make no less than $13 an hour. Right now, our custodians are the ones who are furthest from that. They start at $10.06 an hour, which equates to about $21,000 a year. To move it to $13, it would equate to about $27,000 a year, and that's important. And the reason we need to do that, too, is we are having a vacancy between seven and 12 custodians at any one time during the year. We can't keep custodians. It's a huge turnover, and we have to have our buildings cleaned and classrooms cleaned. I've heard stories of teachers cleaning the classrooms this year, and we just, they've got enough to do. And so we need to raise that to a wage where we can keep and recruit, retain good people. Same for aides and administrative assistants. They're not as far away from that 13 in their starting salary, but they're still under. So we want to raise theirs to $13 an hour or two in terms of starting. Third goal, increase the number of teachers. You know, as enrollment goes up, we require more folks to teach our students. We, you know, most of these positions are based on high class sizes in high schools. We're seeing some pretty high class sizes, especially at Blacksburg High School. We do have one new course offering in the 10 positions that I'm asking for. We want to add a pharmacy tech program where our students can graduate and be pharmacy techs, and that is something that is in high demand. And so the other positions, just looking at class sizes, reading, math, science, some pretty large class sizes, looking at our enrollment. You know, one other area that we'd like to, that is not directly a teacher or work-based learning coordinator. Something we've done and we've been, had a focus on for the last three years is developing a work-based learning program. And in fact, the first year the state gave the award for work-based learning programs, we earned the award as the best in the state. We've gone from 30 kids to over 500 kids in work-based learning. In other words, they, a lot of them leave school, they go to a job, and I think that's real learning, too, when they're going to a job. And so we've been paying stipends to teachers. It's gotten to where there's so many of them that are leaving and going, and we have to interview their bosses and making sure they're going to work, and 500 kids is a lot of kids to keep up with. And so, you know, we feel it's worth looking at that position as well. And then, other 10 positions, three or two be determined in elementary school. Elementary school, we never know until kindergarten signs up exactly how many folks we're going to need. Kindergarten is one of those, you just don't know till you walk in the door. You know, we have an idea at the other grade levels, but kindergarten is something that we always just don't know, and we don't know until mid-summertime where we need to add a teacher in elementary schools due to class sizes. You know, we have to switch teachers from school to schools, we do if necessary, but that is an area that we would need possible new teachers to. And then the last goal is to maintain employee healthcare. We were lucky enough to do that last year. Of course, healthcare will most likely go up for us on our end, but we don't want it to go up for our employees. And so that is another goal that we would like to accomplish. So, now to get into the nitty-gritty of the numbers, I'm going to ask Mr. Prance to take over.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. Members of the Board of Supervisors, we've got this presentation based off of the categories that are set by the state. The first category is our instruction, which is the largest part of our budget. You'll see that that represents 77.1%. We start off with our 1920 current operating budget of $89.6 million. There's a categorical realignment, which you'll see on another slide. The salary enhancement, as Dr. Myers discussed, a 3% to 10 FTEs, and then the increase that we're required under VRS, which is a total of $3.7 million, and that's a 4.14% increase. This represents currently what our salary scales are. The numbers that are shown in this column, the second column, represents MCPS, our scale for our teachers. Salem City, you see in red, so they're beating us in all of those categories. Then, where the green, where the green, you see again, Roanoke, those are the lines that we beat them, and then the red, and you can go down the line. Our intent is to continue to become better and may even compete with Salem City, because that really is one of our biggest competitors. You also see down toward the bottom on step 30, right now, we're at $5,094 difference compared with Salem, Roanoke City, which is a little over $6,900, and then Roanoke County, we're almost at a push. That's where they cap out, and we cap out at 32. So the intent was, is to continue to raise our beginning page, continue to address the bottom or the top tier of our page, and then, we already had done the compression last year. With the changes that we're discussing, you can see how we've gone from the red in the top two categories with Salem City. Now, we beat them based off of their current, we don't know what their final projected growth will be. We continue to get more and more competitive with Roanoke City, and if you get down to the bottom, where we were almost $6,000 difference, we've brought that gap down on step 60 to 40, step 30, $4,600. On step 32, we're at $1,800. So we're getting more and more competitive, and that was our goal, to address the beginning page as well as addressing the teachers at the top of their scale. When we look at the next category, it's the administration, attendance, and help. We start off with a budget of $5.2 million. You can see the categorical realignment, and all we're doing there is placing the expenditure where it goes within the proper category. The salary enhancement's a 3%. The VRS, and the total increase in that category is $257,000, or a 4.93% increase. The next category is our transportation department. We start with a base of 5.1 salary enhancements. The VRS, total increase of $175,000, or 3.4%. The next category is our operations and maintenance. Included in this is a small piece of technology. Total budget is $15.7 million. The 3% salary increase, note in the health, total decrease of $684,000, or 4.36%. On the non-instruction, we have, it's $320,000. This generally is basic supplies, things of that sort. We don't have, you were going to throw that one? We don't have any instructional annual personnel in that category. The next category is our debt service, which this is related to the energy savings program we did many years ago, and continue to pay that debt off during the time program. This is a total of all the categories, so you can see the salary enhancements of 3% is $3.4 million. The additional positions of 10 is $700,000. A $701,000 increase on the VRS, the total is $4.83 billion, 4.15% increase, which we give us $121.283 million budget. Revenue that we project, so we take the beginning 2019 budget base, we add in what the state has projected that we're going to receive, that brought us to $119.5 million. The amount that we respectfully request from the Board of Supervisors for consideration is $1,754,400. But you can see the breakdown there, including the federal. We do have a small increase in the federal side based on the federal flat. The budget calendar, so we have the joint meeting with y'all and our school board on March 17th, and then you can see the other respective dates. With our goal is to go to our school board and get the budget approved in May. Any questions?
Let me say this real quick. Go ahead. One thing that's not in there, I've told you that we bought two buses so far this year, we need to still buy six more buses. It's not in the budget, and I believe that we'll have enough year-end money to better go back and pick up the purchase on those six buses, and so I feel confident that that will have to be funded in next year's budget.
We have questions? I'd like to start with Supervisor Scheffler.
Not this time.
Supervisor Demont, go ahead.
Can we go back? Oh, sorry. Can we go back just a couple of slides? Can you go over this one again for me, and specifically? First of all, it's a little bit difficult for me to see.
Yeah, we can't see.
Okay, so you know that this is a summary of the previous six slides.
Right.
First category, second, third, fourth.
Right. So I think it says total change to the far right column, 4.831140.
Right.
Okay. Percent change, I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm actually seeing this, is 4.15?
Correct.
Total budget, 121?
$1.283 billion.
Okay. So the amount requested from the Board of Supervisors, 1.744.
Right.
Okay, so 1.75, we'll say. Can you explain why the total change of 4.813 and the amount requested is different?
Because when you look at our revenues that we have going into the start of the year of this year, 116.4 million, we anticipate based off of the preliminary governor's budget, which is still being finalized, of $2.6 million, the $416,000 from the federal, which gets us from the 119.5 to 9 million. That difference with the 121 and the 119 is 1.75.
Okay, I really appreciate that, because I was trying to, I wasn't really keeping up at that point, because I was having a hard time seeing it, so I wasn't really understanding where.
I apologize.
No, 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 I'm glad for a lot of information. Maybe I should have my prescription checked.
No, it was hard to see.
But I was just having a hard time keeping up, and I appreciate the clarification on why those two numbers were different. So, what you're requesting, the increase that you would request from us would be the 1.74 in addition to the additional state and federal you're looking at.
Correct, 1.74.
Okay, thank you very much.
And some key pages for y'all as you're going through your budget. Would be page 13, that I think you're gonna look, wanna look at, page 13. Page 14, page 17, which shows you the change in the local composite index, which will have an impact on funding from the state. Page 27, which is the categorical breakdown of our expenses. The request that we've got here is to be found on page 28. And then the school nutrition, which is page 33.
And as I always say, I really appreciate that we get this much information. It's very, very helpful to, especially now that I've got a few of these, I'm collecting, got a collection of these going on. But it's very helpful to be able to compare and, and have detailed explanations. So, one, I'm not bothering anybody with a bunch of questions, because we've given some, been given so much information. But then it's also very transparent. So, I really do appreciate the work and effort that goes into your budget request and making sure that it is so thorough. Thank you very much.
Obviously, you haven't had time to look through this, so if you have questions, feel free to email or call. I'd be glad to answer your questions after tonight too.
Supervisor Blevins?
Thank you.
What?
Miss Boots.
What about her?
I know it all, remember? So, I don't have any questions. Yeah, yeah, I'll go last, no problem.
I gotta switch it every once in a while, it gets boring.
Well, first of all, thank you for providing this information for us, and I'm sure I'll have some follow-up questions. But first of all, on the 10 new positions that you're asking for, one, only one of those is for a new program. Is that correct, for the pharmacy tech?
Correct.
Okay, very good. And then this, the remaining nine positions would be to help to keep, maintain, class size?
Eight, eight of them would.
Eight, eight, okay. And then the, the workforce coordinator, is that the, okay, very good. And, all right, and so, what is the typical size of the classroom?
These here, what we've looked at is, we are, without these teachers, we're looking at about 30 in a class, 32. We like to keep high school classes down around 25 and below.
Okay, very good. And with this additional 1.7 million and some change that you're asking for, would that be able to fund all of this? This would give 3% to all employees, and also the, keep the health costs? And, and that would give your, was it classified employees, your custodians, and your aides, and some administrative, up to 13 dollars, that would be the starting?
Correct.
And then when the compression between the, I see the scales, the steps, it would help with the compression part of it too. So, it'd be, obviously, if you have somebody who's been working for many, many years versus everybody's catching up to them very quickly, we wanna be able to retain that talent. Is that what?
Are you talking about the teacher pay?
Teacher pay, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, yes, and that's why we have increased the top of the scale. In fact, the largest raise will be, because it's an average of 3% raise throughout the teacher scale, the largest raise would be someone at step 31 going to 32, it's almost about 3.8%.
Okay.
But it's all right around for a 3% raise.
All right, very good. And then the, the buses, the six that you're trying to, in the future, sometime this year, will that be from carryover money, or how will that be?
Either carryover or year-end money, as we're looking at our, our dollars as we get down to June 30th date.
Okay.
Might be a little bit of that, actually.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Supervisor Ken.
On page 13, I think when you switched the cafeteria, the food and all, to this new company, you said that was gonna save you, what, four, $500,000 a year?
It was gonna reverse the negative trend. We've been losing about $400,000 a year, and this comes in with a guarantee of 155,000 profit.
What happened was?
So, basically, you're right, about $100,000.
Yeah, what happened was, we had a reserve for several years, where we had that reserve, and every year we kept having to dip into the reserve, because we were in the red, and it was a food service reserve that we were dipping into. This past year, we ran out of the food service reserve, and had to dip into our own operational fund to balance out the food service. And it was like $30,000, I think we had to actually, to make it balance. So, we, we had all the reserve that we had, we were done. It was gone. So, we hadn't done what we did this past year, this year we'd have probably a half million dollars of what we're asking for going to just food service.
I'm just trying to figure out, you said it was gonna save you almost $500,000?
Yeah.
But now you're saying you had to dip into your operation money to pay for?
Not this year, that was in FY 19, not FY 20. FY 20, we're in the positive.
All right. I understand the confusion.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we had this pot of money over here that was a reserve, that where we had made money years ago. For the past, I don't know, five, six years, we had been losing money. And so, to cover that loss, this is, this is nutrition money. We had to pull that nutrition money in to, to balance it out every year. And it was hundreds of thousands of dollars, to the point where last year, we're like, you know, if we kept doing what we're doing, we're gonna run out of money. And last year we did, we didn't have any more reserve, to the point where we had to come over to our instructional budget, this budget, to balance it out. And so, this year, if we hadn't made that move, probably half million dollars of our instructional money would have had to, because we're required by law to balance out that nutritional budget.
So, you're saying you're gonna save money starting from now, on your nutrition?
I like to look at it as using money. We're, we're gonna lose money this year if we didn't make that change.
Right. By I mean, starting from now on, you're gonna be?
In the positive.
There you go.
In fact, we're, we're in a situation now, we can build back up.
Yes, sir.
A reserve.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Because we're doing so well with our food service program.
I just got through there, because it said 643,000 more dollars for your nutrition budget.
Yeah, what does that mean?
That right there is the increase in revenues. So, last year we projected 4.5 million dollars in revenues for FY 20. We actually are projecting based off of the first seven months of this year, and working in consultation and nutrition group, that our revenue is gonna increase another 14%. So, total revenues that we are, we're in line right now to hit 4.5 million for the end of FY 20. And FY 21 will go to 5.2, and that's the increase you saved, 643,000.
Okay.
The bulk of that increase is in reimbursable lunch and reimbursable breakfasts. The biggest profit for the one category that generates the dollars to pay for the operating costs of that is your reimbursable lunch program. So, for every child on a $2.75 full pay on a lunch, we get the 2.75 that they pay us, plus an additional 25 cents on their lunch purchase. And a full-paid student, we're getting $3.40 approximately, and on a reduced student who pays 40 cents, we get an additional $3. Breakfast is substantially less than that. So, our, our focus is always on growing the reimbursement program, because that's where you bring children in, and that's where you make your money to pay for your operations.
I can tell you about personal, that's some good food.
Good. Highly recommend the food we're serving this year, it's really good.
And one more question, and I'll be done. Do you know how many, or what the Salem City budget is for their schools?
No idea. I know it's compared to the number of students, it's a lot. Of course, their tax rate's about $1.11. Yeah, so that's, you know, we, we actually, just for fun, because it was for fun, how much money would we need to pay as much as Salem pays their teachers? I think it was another $10 million. So, I didn't think y'all would want to help us out that much. So, yeah.
All right, I do appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Diggs.
Oh, you are, okay, well.
I was gonna give to you.
Um, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think it's very transparent, and I really like the way you explained what you do with the lapse money. I think all of those things that you put money into were really needed. I did wanna ask, and I really am glad you're putting building trades back in, because that's something that I really think was important after I visited our county next door in Giles a couple of years ago, and I was like, hey, they can build these houses, you know, and like, hey, we need to do that. So, I'm really glad you put that in. I just had a question about your teacher licensing program, because I, I serve on the Steering Committee for Education for VACO, and they were really interested in this when I mentioned that we had it, because they're having a lot of trouble recruiting teachers in various counties. So, I'm glad that the connection, sounds like you guys are making connections, so you can tell people how to do it. What is, tell me the name of it again, did you name it, or?
We did name it, we did.
Alternative license, okay.
Isn't it?
Okay. And if somebody needs a contact person for that, who should I tell them to contact?
Dominic McKee.
Okay, thanks.
Our assistant HR director, he's one of the people.
Okay, thanks, because I think I, I know some people that wanna get in touch.
In fact, we're being asked to do several presentations around the state.
Yeah, it's a big problem, so.
Yes.
And for you to be able to do it in-house, I mean, that, that says a lot for the quality of people that we have here in the school system that can provide the, the study and the learning, so.
Our teachers and administrators are the ones who are gonna be teaching.
I know, it's, it's so neat.
And, and I'm gonna tell you, you know, we have great universities around us, but what's great about this, what used to happen is this, teachers, you need, I think, six education classes.
Mm-hmm.
You can have an English degree, and, but you don't, you can't go teach, you cannot go teach English until you get those, those classes. So, what they have to do is go back and take those six classes. We're offering those six classes in-house, and we're doing it in conjunction with, with the teacher and what they're teaching. Because they have five years to get their license, their full license, so they have five years to take our classes. And our folks are teaching it and doing it, and working with them live, basically. And so, it's, it's pretty neat.
And I also heard something exciting today at another meeting I was in, that Montgomery Central is going to be using trauma-informed care, I mean, is gonna be identified, I think that's really exciting, something that's needed.
We're working towards any student who is, who goes to Montgomery Central, alternative school, will have to also take a trauma-informed class.
Okay.
As part of the curriculum there.
Yeah. So, thank you, doing a lot of good things, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Bone.
A number of questions. If you look on, I don't know if you have the book in front of you, page 37. It's the chart of the average daily membership trend. So, was it really, is it really true that it's flat this year, but you're estimating it to go up, you know, almost 20% actually?
No, it's not, because the 9,700 was based off of what the ADM was projected for the FY 20 budget. Our actual ADM came in higher based on the October 1st numbers, based off of our analysis. Historically, what we've done, as well as what we saw in the trend, that allowed us, as y'all approved, an additional supplemental appropriation about two months ago, that that generated about $500,000 revenues. That was from the additional ADM, and then we pick it all up when we projected at FY 21. So, that's why you see an increase of about 155 students.
So, what did, what was the projected ADM for 20?
For 20, it was right at 9,700 actually.
But I mean, actual, rather.
Actual came in at 9,755, I think, approximately.
All right. Page 39, the cost per pupil just keeps going up and up and up. It looks faster than cost of living to me. But maybe the math, you know, that's $500 per, a little bit, I can't really read, but you hear.
Yeah, well, I hope it goes up, fashion cost of living, because that means teachers are getting raises.
Mm-hmm.
We're only getting, most of us, most of the costs that are going up are because of the teacher raises that we're getting.
Okay.
If we, if we only give a cost of living raise, it's not really a raise for our teachers.
Mm-hmm.
So, we want it to, to be an actual raise, it has to be above the cost of living.
Okay. Thank you. On page 42, at the bottom, I saw this chart as I was listening to you present while I was going through this book. So, obviously, something happened in math over the 18, 19 year. What happened?
Oh, the 18, 19 year.
Yeah, the red line.
Where it went up?
Yes.
The, the test changed.
Oh, okay.
Not that we didn't do anything great in classroom, because we did. Our teachers worked hard, did great things. You know, I'll, I'll take us back to 2012. In 2012, there's a reason we don't show 2011 in this chart. I didn't notice that. Because 2011, you'd probably see our pass rates up around 80%, all right? And you see we're at 65% in 2012? Well, guess what happened? The state changed the test, and they changed it in a way, and I know this because I was a high school principal, and we couldn't believe, we went from 92% pass rate to, to 60% in my school. And I know our teachers didn't get that much worse in that one year, students didn't get that much less intelligent, all right? And so, it was a huge change in the test. This past year, the test changed again, and it, it was more favorable to us. Not saying our folks didn't do great things to teach math, because they did, they worked hard. But we were afraid it was gonna look like it did 2011, and we're gonna drop again after we just figured it out. And so, so the test minors, it's good, it really is. That's a good question.
And then, that leads me to ask the question about Eastmont, and how all of our schools are accredited at this time. Is Eastmont and those schools getting better and better away from the marginal line, or what's going on?
It's not all of Eastmont.
No, I know, I mean, it's a.
Eastmont Elementary.
That was the one that was, you know.
Yeah, Eastmont, Eastmont Elementary is fully accredited, they have them. They're doing a wonderful job out there. East Montgomery High School is fully accredited as well. Shawsville Middle School is the.
Was that the one?
That was the one's past year that, that missed the mark in science by the most part. And so, but I've got a feeling we're gonna get a nice surprise out of them this year. They're gonna get it done.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna, they're, they're really doing some amazing things this year out there. And, and we, you know, we don't just wait for the SOL test at, at year-end to see how we're gonna do. We do have certain tests along the way. We use what's called a MAT test, which is a national norm test, that actually is a, is a pretty true predictor of how kids will do on the SOL test, and so far, those scores are going up. We're looking okay there.
Great. Okay, can you go to the slide that has the teacher, where they are today, not where you want them to be?
Today?
So, tell me how you measure that we're in second place?
For starting salary. They were agreeing.
Oh, is that?
I say we're second in starting salary.
Starting salary, not the scale, not?
Not across the board.
Okay.
No, our, our goal last year was to surpass Rafferty. And we did that except in that, those three bottom steps right there, but we did get them at the top. And so, last year, if you look at us compared to Rafferty, I think the entire plan is red.
Mm-hmm.
For Rafferty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but then we did do enough to surpass the top of the scale to, to beat out Roman County, Roanoke City.
Could you go to the next slide, please? So, it looks like you're getting another four or five years ahead of Roanoke City and Roanoke County, and one more year or two out of Radford, and two out of Salem City. So, you're beating Salem City starting wages, is what you hope to do.
This is all dependent upon what they do.
Yeah, if they don't raise their teachers at all.
Correct.
But I mean, if the state gives everybody a 3, 3.5% raise, everybody's going up, and what you're asking for is going to bump you above, it's gonna shift you even more, or?
Not necessarily.
Everybody's gonna move 3.5%? You know, I'm a little confused with, how does that? If the state gives a, a flat raise, then everybody moves up?
Not necessarily. They, of course, you gotta remember. Not necessarily. They, of course, you've got to remember, the state gives us money based on our SOQ positions. In other words, they don't, the state gives a 3% raise, they do not give enough money to cover every position in our school division, only the SOQ positions, which means what they think, what the state says is quality, that's what the Q stands for, we don't believe that's quality. We need more teachers than what the state says. If we did, for instance, say we have four fourth grade classes at Falling Branch, the SOQ probably only covers three of those classes. But if we only fund it and just add three teachers, we'd have about 27, 28 in class instead of 22. Does that make sense? And so that's, so we don't get enough money for all of it. And then several oppositions are not SOQ funded, like several of our system principals are not. I'm not sure if all the principals are SOQ funded. Yeah, we actually have to pay for some of our principals at small schools and we need principals at our schools.
I guess my question is then, like, right now, the state budget has in it three or three and a half percent for SOQ positions. Is that already taken in consideration in what you're asking?
It is not. You know, we talked about, what'd you think, a half million dollars if we were to get the 3% from the state or SOQ? So we'd have an additional half a million dollars if that were to happen. You know, we need to talk about where do we put that half million dollars? Something we've talked about also that's in category one is instructional supplies. If you remember, when I came a few months ago and asked for additional money for ADM, we were talking about putting in instructional supplies. And we feel confident we're going to be able to do that after this coming year. What we have, we've come a long way with that. Basically, what we're doing for our families is this, we had several schools that were costing parents 50 to $100 for the kids to buy supplies for school. What we're doing now is buying several common items for our schools where the limit for any elementary student will be $25. No student should have to pay over $25 to come to school and buy stuff anymore, okay? So we're putting a lot of that instructional back into supplies into the classroom as well. And so, you know, just some basic, basic things that our classrooms need. So where that money goes ultimately is up to the school board. Some could go back into this, all right? Some could, you know, go into supplies anywhere in that structural budget. And you've got to remember too, now, if Salem attempts to keep their pay scale, their steps are so large, it would, there might be 3% between each step. If their teacher went from, you know, from, I don't know, step 11 to step 12, that's about $400. I don't know what percent raise that is, I'll have to calculate, but just, that's a lot of money right there just in them taking that step. And so whatever their spread is for that, so.
So you've helped, you've explained, and it makes sense, the point of your budget is that you can't count on anything until it's actually given. And that's why you haven't counted any state raises.
Oh, no.
Right.
What we, we have estimated the governor's budget, which had no raises until the second year. So that was the, what, 2.6 million?
That's helpful.
So that's in there. It's not 2.6 million, but we feel confident about that it will at least be the governor's budget. That's in there to make this happen.
That's helpful. Thank you. If you go to the smaller budgets per category and you have the health insurance cost, what I don't understand is why, where in any of this presentation do you actually show the change? You're expecting health insurance to cost you.
We anticipate this year an increase.
I mean, not to the employees, but really?
We don't anticipate an increase either on the district side or the
And why is that?
Based on our conversations, Van from looking at our historical data as well as claims each individual month, we don't project an increase. We feel very comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
That's an amazing thing.
So the nutrition program, are the students happier?
Oh, absolutely, they're happy.
How do you know that?
Because I talk to them every day. I mean, when I go to schools, you know, I talk to them, I see the lines. At Christiansburg High School, the line used to be at about the door. Now, at the beginning of lunch, the line is halfway down the cafeteria. The kids are eating more. So yeah. And I've got five kids in my house too, and they're a lot happier. I know they're happier because I'm paying the bills. They're not packing here as much, I'm having a place.
I second that. Definitely the school lunches are being eaten.
Yeah. And of course, we can monitor what our students eat. We have a program. We can go in and see what our students are eating and what they're buying. And I had to pull back a couple of my kids to, they were
Same.
Yes.
So has the trash increased from the lunches?
Well, I guess if there got more trays coming out, and yeah, I'm sure it has.
I mean, we're seeing, we're seeing an increase in trash, but not from kids getting the components that we saw when the recs changed about seven years ago. Then you saw children, yeah, you required that they had to take it and then they were throwing it in the trash. We're not seeing that. We're not seeing that kind of
As much wasted food.
Yeah.
You might get more paper.
Sure. And then is it, is there some proof that the food is more nutritious?
Well, you may answer.
No, that's all you.
I mean, we have complied with USDA regulations both for lunch under the National School Lunch Program, breakfast under the National School Breakfast Program, and snacks also have to be in full compliance with the Smart Snacks Program. So yes, ma'am, they're all in full compliance with USDA regulations for all school systems throughout the country.
And you have been in compliance all these years. Is there a way to measure that, is it, you're just as nutritious as you have been in the last several years?
Well, the nutritional guidelines change. That's one of the things that caused the decrease that took place because children, you know, you get down to, I go into the school and I'm eating things differently than what I do at home, it becomes a challenge there. But I'll say this, this year, the district, we go through an annual review, a federal annual review every three years. Our review is done in the month of November. So very short timeframe, new company, and we pass with flying colors. I think that's kind of representative of the type of operation that we have both with TNG and our staff.
Great. And then lastly, the teacher licensing program that you have instituted, is that an accredited program? You know how, like, when, if, if a person who graduated with their bachelor's degree went to Radford to get their master's degree, that's an accredited program, right? Is your program accredited similarly?
No, it's not accredited by SACS or anything like that. Basically, we were allowed to offer those classes and that information.
And the state doesn't require an accredited program? They just require those six classes?
We had to demonstrate to the state that what we're teaching in our program is at least equivalent to what will be taught in a university classroom. Now, the teacher will not get any type of university credit, but what they will get is a teacher license. Now, if they come to teach with us and start that program with us, they, you know, one advantage for us until everyone else starts doing it, they can't go anywhere else and do it. They would have to stay with us as well until they at least finish that program.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I have all the dumb questions now. You were talking about adding some principals even for half day. What typically does a principal do during a half of a day?
Not this year. That was last year. We did that.
Okay.
As far as this budget. That was, we used, we did that with our lapse money at the end of last year. And so it was a half day split between two small schools. And so we had, we added a half day at Bellevue Elementary School. It wasn't half days.
Halftime.
Half. Back from here, Principal Bellevue.
Halftime.
It was halftime. In other words, we split days.
It was two days and then we had a birthday.
Two days at your place and two days at Harding's. Correct.
But you're not, you don't, you're not doing it this year?
Yeah, we are doing it. We're doing it. Yeah, as we, it's already
Just be hearing things.
It's already in the budget. It's not something that we need to add this coming year. No, it's happening.
All right. Now, if I understand this correctly, you're asking for 10 additional teaching positions? Because I saw on one of the slides it said teachers 60-plus.
Okay, yeah. I meant to tell you this. We sent out a budget request to all our school buildings and our principals get input from the faculty, then they send back the request to us. We had over 60 requests for additional positions in our schools, all right? So if you think about it, it's about three positions per school because we have 20 schools, right? So we had over 60 positions that were requested from our schools. And going through those requested positions, they would be helpful, there's no doubt. But we had to go and see, okay, what do we need the most? And that's where we came up with the 10 that we're asking for. Well, if you ask our principals, we need over 60, 60 people.
No doubt, no doubt. Next question is, when you move the starting pay for the custodians up to $13, I thought Supervisor Blevins was going to hit that one, but she talked about teachers. Is there a compression issue for the others?
And that has been figured into the budget. And so what he's, what I'm assuming you're referring to is, we have several custodians who have been working for us for several years who still are not at $13 an hour. We're not going to take them to $13 an hour. We're going to take them to above $13 an hour. So there's a separation between a new custodian and a custodian who's been with us for several years who still wasn't that person. So they may go, don't quote me, they may go to 14, 30 an hour, who are
I won't quote you, but they might.
Don't quote me anymore.
You're on video, don't worry.
So yes, we're going to, there will be a separation for those who have been with us for a while, who still are not at 13, and those who are new.
And you talked about adding that extra step on the top. Do you know how many teachers that you have that are, that are on the top tier now?
Sixty.
Approximately sixty.
Sixteen?
Sixty.
Sixty.
And you think about that, all right? Thirty-two years.
Out of how many teachers do you have?
Nine hundred and eighty-eight teachers.
Okay. So if you think about it, 32 years teaching. You graduate college when you're, a lot of folks 22 and start teaching. They're 54 years old, all right? A lot of folks are not residing and quitting at 54 these days. So I mean, folks are working into their 60s. And so, and we have, some of our greatest are right there, you know, I'm right there with them, you know? And so folks are not retiring these days after 30 years of service. They can't afford to do it.
No, well, I think it's great that you can hang out with them and they still want to come to work. That's fantastic to have that experience. I'm sure it benefits all the schools, I don't know. I think that's about all I got. But I did want to say thank you for your presentation and also thank you whenever you bring up issues like, well, we're expecting this from the state, this dollar amount and, or like the issues with the buses where you may have carryover money that you're going to take care of that. Because that's, that's kind of stuff, I know, that I forgot about a lot of that stuff last year. And it's nice to get a reminder on that too, to know that there's still additional things coming. But thank you very much. All right, the next item is public address. I think we have a couple of people signed up. Mr. Meadows?
Yes, we do. Our first person signed up to speak this evening is Erin Bull. If you'll come to the podium, state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Okay. And I just have notes, so I'm going to be using these lights to help me time this. So I'm Erin Bull. I live at 2422 Ridge Road in Blacksburg. And I'm a member of the Montgomery County Education Association and I teach fifth grade at Christiansburg Elementary. So I wanted to come and speak to you in support of the school board and Dr. Meyer's budget request. Education is an investment. And unlike many of our surrounding counties, Montgomery County is growing. We're growing economically, but we're also growing in population. In Christiansburg, Ryanair, Blacksburg, and Shawsville, there are new housing developments underway right now. I know that because I drove to Roanoke yesterday, so I've seen several of them firsthand. This growth necessitates additional teachers and support professionals in order to teach our students. To recruit and retain quality teachers, but also those classified employees, instructional aides, bus drivers, custodians, and administrators, we need to have adequate and competitive compensation. As the PAC legislative chair, I know the MCA doesn't only come to you with budget requests, just like the school board and Dr. Meyer don't only come to you. At the end of January, the MCA traveled to Richmond and we lobbied our legislators there. We had a rally asking for them to work harder and do better. And we feel like the fact that both the House and the Senate proposals are putting forward salary is because teachers in the state have stood up and said, you need to work harder. We expect better than this. Right now, there's a possibility of either a 2% increase over, in each year, or 3% in the first year, 4% in the second year from the state. But all of that is still up in the air. So we appreciate the work that Dr. Meyer and the school board have put in to find a way to support educators here in Montgomery County. And when I say educators, I don't just mean me and other teachers. I mean, all of the people who work to educate our children. I also, since it looks like I have a minute, want to speak to lunch because I take my kids to and from lunch and I will say, they do like lunch better this year. And one thing that I love, and this is because maybe I'm a soft heart, is that they, if they're hungry, they can go back and get as many additional fruits or vegetables they want. So no kid leaves the cafeteria hungry. And so just in terms of like what the changes have put forth, to me as a teacher who's, I hate having a kid who's hungry. They can't learn that way and they shouldn't be hungry. So I really feel like that is a bonus put in place. They're, you know, they're eating the food, but they also, if they need more, they have the ability to get that. And so I appreciate that. So thank you for what you've done to support education. Please support the proposed budget. And we ask our legislators in Richmond to work harder. So I will ask you, keep up the hard work. And if you can work a little harder, we appreciate that too. Thank you.
Board members, our next speaker who signed up is Robbie Jones.
Good evening. Mr. Fojtowski, Chair Fojtowski, members of the board, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to support or ask for your support for the school board budget presented. I would like to remind you, I'm not asking for a tax increase, just for you to support the school board budget. I can testify, and I'll tell you right now, I've lost a really good custodian this year because she couldn't afford to live on the salary they started her on in my building. She actually came to work for Montgomery County. And in my building, I do have a teacher that has taught for 42 years. So she's definitely a seasoned teacher and she is invaluable to our building and to the other younger teachers coming in to the profession. I feel it's very important to keep the salary scales up because we do need good quality people. And like I've said before, to all of you, this is your children and your grandchildren that we are educating and we are responsible for them. And you can't really put a price on that. But again, I really am asking you to support the school board budget presented. And side note, I'm not asking for a tax increase. Thank you.
That's it?
Board members? That's all that signed up. But if anybody else would like to come up, if you want to state your name and address, you have four minutes. Seeing no one come up, we're going to go ahead and end the public hearing. And next item is our addendum.
No addendum this evening, sir?
No addendum. All right, our next item is items of consent. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Schaefer?
Aye.
Ms. Blad?
Aye.
Ms. King?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Vann?
Aye.
Chair, you got it?
Aye. Okay, breezing along. We're already into reports. County attorney?
I want to slow things down. No reports.
Keep it rolling, is that what you're saying? All right. County administrator?
Mr. Chair, due to the late hour, I have no reports.
Yeah, you don't get to say that very often. You don't get to say that very often. All right. Can I, can I go hit or miss again with the supervisor? It's exciting that way, isn't it? Never know when you're going to get called on. Okay, yeah. Supervisor Blevins?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Christiansburg Blue Demons for their second place for the wrestling team. Very proud of them for that, and that is all.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Shepard?
I just want to back up a little bit. I wanted to say to Dr. Meyer, I was hoping you'd stick around, but I really appreciate all those new programs, the drone and the computer science and especially building trades that's come back into the high schools. I remember when we had building trades before, and I learned a lot there. So, I'm really excited about that. I think it's a great thing. That's all I have.
Supervisor King?
Just a short thing. When we went to Richmond and was talking to the legislator, I brought up the, I guess you call SOQ pay raise that they give them, and I told them, that wasn't fair. We have more people than that in the school system. They was... They weren't being honest with the taxpayers of Virginia, because when they say teachers' raised, everybody thinks all the teachers gets that, but they don't. And I did explain that to them. They need to be up front with everybody. And another thing, I just want to thank the staff, because here for long, we're going to be doing a budget session, and they're going to have long hours, and we do appreciate
Supervisor Demonts?
Okay. Really quick, I've got something that I would like for all of you to give some consideration to. You don't have to commit tonight, but I will be following up with you to bother you all individually, so just heads up. Broomin and Bloomin is our county's annual sustainability event held in the spring each year. That will be on April twenty-fifth this year. The hours for the event are eight to one, and the way that we do the event, people volunteer, and they either go to an assigned location, or they volunteer and let us know where their location is, so we can track where the volunteers are throughout the county. At the end of the event, we actually have a celebratory hot dog and hamburger luncheon at Mid-County Park Plan to invite the volunteers to come and enjoy a hot dog, hamburger, maybe some potato salad, and just kind of celebrate and thank them for their efforts to beautify broom and bloom Montgomery County. So, one of the events that is planned this year, and we have not hammered out all of the specific details, but is a planting of some sort in Coal Miners Park along the Huckleberry Trail in the Merrimack section of the trail. And I thought Supervisor Blevins had mentioned possibly us doing some sort of service project together, and I thought that might present a good opportunity to spend a couple of hours[1703.47]